Reggie. Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the February 26th, 2019, City Council meeting, beginning at 7:30 PM. Please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Present.
Majikis.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
Deastis.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Six present and one absent, we do have a quorum. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of the January 15, 2019 Committee of Hall meetings. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Baner's made that, Mr. Williams has seconded. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, we have some good business tonight, so I'm going to ask a motion to deviate. Mr. Baner's made that motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tonight, we were asked to deviate for three reasons: for a public hearing, for the CDBG call for projects, a police department swearing-in ceremony, and a business recognition night. Okay. Thank you. The Cook County Bureau of Administration requires the City of Rolling Meadows to hold a public hearing regarding the use of Cook County Community Development Block Grant Funds. This hearing is to solicit funds to input from the community regarding the future funding and program needs. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at 7:33 PM on Tuesday, February 26, 2019. The Cook County Community Development Block Grant Program funds a variety of needs, some of which include single-family rehabilitation, rehabilitation, fair housing activities, housing counseling, affordable housing opportunities, infrastructure improvements, commercial rehabilitation, capital improvement, and public service activities. The City of Rolling Meadows encourages any interested parties or organizations to present any current or future requests or ideas regarding the use of Cook County Community Development Fund Block Grant Programs. The City of Rolling Meadows City Council will be requested to approve any Community Development Block Grant Project applications at its regularly scheduled meeting of March 26, 2019. The City is required to follow the established procedures of the Cook County Community Development Block Grant Program regarding the project, regarding project, submit, and establish limitations on funding. The City of Rolling Meadows will also consider any necessary revisions to the five-year plan on file with Cook County Department of Planning and Development that was originally approved at the February 11, 2014 City Council meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak regarding the Cook County Community Development Block Grant Program? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak regarding the Cook County Community Development Block Grant Program? Let the record show that the hearing closed at 7:36 PM at February 26, 2019. Thank you. Well, now we get, now we get to have one of the pleasurable moments of the City Council, the mayor, and the City of Rolling Meadows. There's a swearing-in ceremony. This young gentleman, Sergeant Phil Burley, would you please step forward? You're in the spotlight, so I'm gonna ask you a few questions, you know? So first off, I had the opportunity to be on the Fire and Police Commission for a number of years, and I believe it was 2002 that this young man came to the City of Rolling Meadows. So could you just tell us what brought you here very quickly, and then, I mean, if you want to make it long, you can, and then just please let us, let us know who's all here tonight.
Well, I heard great things about the City of Rolling Meadows, coming from another police department, and it's a place that I wanted to be a part of, so I'm happy to be here.
And who's, who's here?
My family's here, my father, Phil, with the camera over there.
Hi Dad, how are ya?
That's my mom, Angela, my daughter Haley, my son Jeremy, and my brother Michael.
Welcome to Rolling Meadows. Are you ready? Okay. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Phil Burley. You know what, he coached me beginning, and I said I was nervous, and I said I promised not to mess that up, but I did. Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant in the City of Rolling Meadows County of Cook. You know, you'd think I never did this before. Do hereby solemnly promise that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and all the laws and ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows that I will perform the duties of the office of a Rolling Meadows Police Sergeant to the best of my ability. Congratulations, we made it. Who's, who's doing the, the penny?
My son Jeremy and my daughter Haley.
Come on, come on down, you now have the floor. You know, at the moment, you outrank your dad, because you have his badge.
This is gonna hurt.
There's no pressure here, I just want you to know that. You know, it's the love of a daughter who has so much patience, Dad. It's gonna be perfect if we're here no matter how long, it's okay. I have all daughters. Congratulations. Let's, let's take a moment, Dad, you can even move up closer to get better pictures. Come on down. Dad, there's a request, your brother, also. Come on up. You get to have your picture taken now. All right, Dad, you need to come up now. No, no, everyone stay, the whole, whole family picture. Come on, everyone else. There you go. You thought just 'cause you brought this nifty camera, you wouldn't get your picture taken. I'm told this brings us to business recognition, and I have two people that are gonna tell me what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. All righty? Okay, sounds good. I, I want to know that they give Thank you. They, they gave me a script that started on Friday, this is the fourth rewrite, so God bless us all, you know? Thank you. I am pleased to present the first business appreciation awards to those businesses that have gone above and beyond to donate, sponsor, or support the community events and programs in Rolling Meadows in 2018. Of these 66 honorary businesses, 14 of them are in attendance this evening. We also want to thank Nothing Bunt Cakes, Mount Prospect, for the generous donation of buntlets for our business and City Council members. These businesses provided assistance to local events by ways of sponsorship, money donations, product donation, or volunteer, volunteerism of events such as Taste of the Town, Veterans Dinner, the city markets, the downtown block party, Friday's Rock, concerts, Fourth of July Parade, and fireworks, parking lot committee, the community bike ride, National Night Out, Wine Down by the Creek, senior luncheon, Hometown Hoedown, Fire Department Open House, and the Holiday Tree Lighting, and spaghetti dinner. We owe much of the success of the community events and the programs of 2018 to all of the generous businesses that will be awarded certificates of appreciation. We are honored to have 14 of them this evening. Bear Construction Company? Come on down. I noticed you're wearing your vest that says Bear Construction. Okay. Thank you. Now, would Now you have, you have to turn around and face the other way, okay. You're, this is the time where you get to talk, so would you like to introduce each other?
Tom Ward.
Susan Ward, not a coincidence.
Oh, okay. You can come a little closer.
It's a family affair.
Okay, so a little closer there. Tell us, how long have you been in business in Rolling Meadows?
In Rolling Meadows?
Yes.
Since 2002.
Okay, and then how long have you been in business as a company?
Since 1984.
All right, well, thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate it. Is there someone taking pictures, or? All right, thank you, thank you for your participation. The next is the Community Church of Rolling Meadows. Well, hi. I've seen your smiling faces. Hi there, so first off, you need to introduce each other, so, and face the camera so that everyone in Rolling Meadows knows who you are.
My name is Leslie Troutman-Lupo. Sarah Thompson.
How long have you been involved with the Community Church of Rolling Meadows? If it's a secret, you don't have to tell us, that's okay.
Since I was a child.
Okay.
About 12 years.
Well, I just, for those of you who are not familiar, the Community Church of Rolling Meadows, where we now have our, our markets on Saturday mornings, and where we've had big parties, and where for, when I got married to my wife, Pat said, "We're going to Cornfest, and you better not do anything that weekend," so, so I want to thank you for everything that you've done to help with us, so, thank you, let's give a hand. Next up is Divine Design and Marketing, Carly Perez. Oh, come on Carly, just bring the whole crew up there, they, they follow you wherever you go, and they're even wearing your shirts. Okay, now, I know you guys do multimedia, so could you turn around so that they see you in the camera, thank you. Okay, would you like to introduce this crew?
Well, I'm Carly Perez, the owner of Divine Design and Marketing.
Teddy Perez, I work at Divine Design and Marketing as the Marketing Manager.
And I'm Lou Nataleino, I'm the Art Director.
So, we know that you have this beautiful office off of Gunkwin Road, but could you give us a little bit about your history?
Well, I've been a resident of Rolling Meadows for 22 years, I've done marketing here for 17, and then I started Divine Design about six years ago, so.
But you had an office before that?
Yeah, we had a smaller office off of Hicks, and now we have two office suites in the Gold Elephant Nazarene University Building on Oak Gunkwin, so.
If you take a look at our Chamber of Commerce booklet, this has been printed by them, and they've been very supportive of the City of Rolling Meadows, so, thank you, thank you for that, all right. Fuji Film Hunt Chemicals USA? Come on, how many, did you bring the whole crew? Did you notice he didn't really want the certificate, he was going for the bunt cake? There we go. Would you like to?
My name's Peter Wardle, I'm the plant manager for Fuji Film Hunt Chemicals.
I am Brian Waters, I'm the Facilities Manager.
Want to tell us a little bit, how long you've been in Rolling Meadows?
Proud to say that we've actually been here 50 years this year, so we started here in 1969.
Wow, thank you. And thank you for being part of the community, I'd like to see if the bunt, let me know tomorrow if the bunt cake gets home with you. All right, thank you. Next is J.C. Restoration. Steve? Okay, all right, who else is supposed to get their picture in here, I mean? That's okay, while we're waiting, do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Amber Bachman.
And, who's, who's, does this?
Sprinting up front.
Yes, yes, yes.
Steve Ross.
Hi Steve.
Hello, sir. Thank you.
Now, who's gonna tell us a little bit about J.C. Restoration?
Amber would love to.
You know, that's not fair, he came up later, and so as a result, go ahead.
We've been in Rolling Meadows since 2009, and been in business since 1982.
Okay, well, we, we thank you, I mean, I haven't needed your services yet, but I, I do know when you go on a golf outing with the Chamber of Commerce, they have a very neat machine that will clean your clubs, no matter how much mud or gum you get into it, so, that was my, one of my first things, so, but thank you for Yes, the marketing worked, I'm thinking of buying one of those, how much is that machine? Oh, we'll work it out, okay. But thank you.
Thank you.
Lake Shore Title Agency? Min J. Power? Okay. Nature's Care Company? I've seen this tall young man at more than one event, so. Thank you, how are you? Thank you. If we could, if we could get you a little closer here. Ask you, okay. All right, who is going to be the one that's going to share us with knowledge? First off, introduce yourselves.
My name's Jake Coward, I'm Executive Director for Nature's Care here in Rolling Meadows.
And I'm Jeff Newshaffer, the manager of the dispensary.
You want to give us a brief history of how you came to Rolling Meadows, and how long you've been here?
Sure, we came to Rolling Meadows three years ago, we just celebrated our three-year anniversary, and we've appreciated the, the warm welcome from everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming to Meadows, thank you. Northwest Suburban College, Mary Burn? I get two for one, I always Thank you. We don't bite in Rolling Meadows, we're very friendly, no one wants to come near this microphone, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
My name is Mary Byrne, I'm the librarian at Northwest Community Suburban College, and also I help with admissions as well.
Edgar Montalvo, I'm the Vice President of Finance, and we've been around for about 10 years.
Have you both been with the college since the beginning?
We offer certificate programs and medical assistance, dental assistance, and pharmacy tax.
Thank you for being part of the community, thank you. Nothing but bunt cakes? Hi, could, could, would you please introduce yourself and tell us what you really do?
What I really do? Bake all through the night cakes, so I can get out and give them away, so.
Well, I appreciate it, we, we have developed a bit of a, we consider her part of the family now, because when people come out of town and they don't have bunt cakes, but my daughter got married in June, and she says, "I don't want a wedding cake, I want donuts and nothing but bunt cakes." So 220 people have got nothing but bunt cakes. Geez, that was really tough, and how long have you been in business?
We are celebrating our fifth birthday this August, so if you're not signed up for our email, go ahead and do it online, because we're gonna have big, I mean, big things happening, lots of cake giveaways, raffles, all kinds of stuff, so, really quick, as I was sitting here listening, and "How long have you been in Rolling Meadows?" and, you know, even though I'm based in Mount Prospect, the communities around me are also part of me, so, and, Rolling Meadows has been one of the best relationships I've had, you know, just in, in participating in different events with the mayor, and Lori's so supportive, and we hooked up on the 60th birthday, and it's just been great ever since, so, thank you for including me in this, I appreciate it.
Well, we, the question I ask her all the time is, "When are you moving to Rolling Meadows?" and she says, "You gotta get corporate to change that," so, thank you very much. Next up is Rep's Place, Michael Rep? Reppy? I was expecting that, you know, the whole family, I mean, I, I met your mom about 25 years ago, I went to a chiropractor office, and then one day I popped up into this place where I found out that my grandson loves the sliders, and then they put a Pac machine in, Pac-Man machine in, and Papa has to save quarters now like crazy all the time, so it works out. Give us a little history, I, I, I still have the letter that you wrote about 15 months ago, it said, "Can I get a liquor license and come to Meadows?" and I said, "How quick."
Yes, he actually did say that to me. We're coming up on our first year anniversary, and it's, I grew up here, as most of you know, and, to be honest, I'm just glad that I can come back and help, that's really what the main goal was for me, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Center of the Mind, Linda Fost. We're trying something different, we're gonna put you in here and see, see if we get someone to look up there for it, so.
I've lived here since 1999, and I started my business in 2001.
Well, thank you very much for being here, we appreciate it, we appreciate your support and the banners, thank you. The Stadium Sports Club and Pizza with Vince Buffalino, please come forward. We, too bad we couldn't get reps in the stadium together, because I have a little story here. There we go. So, we have reps that just started like a year and three months ago, our, the first anniversary is in June, but when they first started, okay Vince, now you were here, and it was just cornfields, right, and they had covered wagons when you first came?
1976.
And to tell us how you, you expanded, because I know
Stadium was 1986.
Right, and so, tell us a little bit, because I know that you and reps were both involved in getting outdoor seating this spring, and I know that we all are gonna want to be able to do that, so tell us a little bit about, I know reps is just remodeled, and now you're also gonna be doing something.
Right, we're also remodeling, and we're fortunate enough to get the first video gaming license, and we also are doing an outdoor patio this spring.
So you'll have a choice in downtown Meadows or the other side of Meadows also, so thank you for everything that you've done, appreciate it. Village Bank and Trust. Did you, did you just like close down the branch and bring the whole group? Here, guys, let's, let's No, no, we're gonna get you in the middle, we're gonna get you in a picture here, there we go. Thank you. All right, who is going to introduce all these folks?
I think the manager will do the honors.
My name is Sergio Gonzalez, I'm the Branch Manager here with Village Bank. This is Akander Hatta, he's our personal banker, same thing with Luis Hernandez, he's our personal banker, and our wonderful teller here, it's Eve Frankel.
You don't get up that easy.
Oh, okay.
How long have you been here, tell us a little bit about what, you know, Village Bank and Trust is about.
Yeah, absolutely, so, Village Bank, we just opened up the location about maybe a year and a half ago.
2017.
Oh, 2017, thank you for the clarification, but more importantly, we're the solution to big banks, we believe in integrity, prosperity, honesty, but more importantly, just like the City of Rolling Meadows, progress through participation, and that's why we've been involved in the community, and you guys should come by and see us, we have free coffee, warm cookies, and great smiles.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Walmart. That brings us to Walmart. All right, here we come. Thank you. I, who is doing the honors of introducing and doing introductions?
I am Nathan, one of the Assistant Managers at Walmart and this is Javada, our Store Manager.
How, how long has Walmart been there?
Rolling Meadows is from 1990.
We all know where Walmart is and we always look forward. If you ever want to expand, we're more than willing to help you. Just want you to know that.
I'm trying.
Oh, yes. We're here to help you, so.
I'm trying. We have empty Sam snacks to it. I'm trying.
Oh, we know. We know. Thank you very much. We'd love to fill it up with anything. It would be great. It would be better if you filled it up. So, thank you for being here. Thank you. I'll take like a two-minute recess if there's any organizations that would like to come up and have pictures. Does anyone wish to come up? Okay. You just have to have a photographer to help you. I now need a motion to close the floor. Mr. Williams and Mr. Ban, I need a second. All in favor? I oppose? Thank you. This brings us to the part of the meeting where the meeting is now open to the public for 20 minutes. I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize before we get to that, as we're putting things back together. The Mayor's Report. I have, it's been a busy weekend with, it's always a busy week in Meadows. For those of you that were at the high school, they had 75 high school bands plus college bands and over 3,000 people that showed up for Jazz in the Meadows. So if you were there, you had the opportunity to hear some really great music. I brought my granddaughter and again, it was a great time. Last night I spent in Palatine Township doing the Blue Star Awards because we do have a member of the community who's serving in the military. And for those of you who are not familiar with the Blue Star, it is presented by cities for military personnel on active duty so that we, a star, a flag will be in the window until the serviceman or woman returns. So we have to do that. I started off this morning at 7:30 at Rolling Meadows High School. They are now opening up an agricultural center and a, in combination with what's called their Pro Start or Chef's Center. In other words, they will be able to produce fresh spices. Mr. Banjer, I hope your ears are ringing at about 8 o'clock this morning because the Principal of Rolling Meadows High School said, "Fresh honey." And she said, "I wonder how we get chickens because I'd like to have eggs." And they're under a whole different set of rules so they don't need our approval. So I just want to bring that forward. So this, I think everyone in Rolling Meadows should know about this program. It will start out with, every, when you go to, when you go to high school, you need to take a biology class. Well, now you can take a biology agricultural class that will bring you into different areas and you will get college credit. So I just thought I would bring that back there. It's quite a remarkable program and it was great, it was great to see where we're going and the opportunities we have to offer. Are there ward reports, Mr. Galliser?
Thank you. I began working with some residents in the Fourth Ward on February 16th from Killarney Court. And this is with regard to some tree removal on the east side of Wilkie Road, Old Wilkie Road. There's a barricade there and they had received a letter from Public Works and they had asked that I go ahead and encourage Public Works to just slow down on the, on the initiative until they have the opportunity to meet with Public Works. And I believe Public Works is gonna schedule time to meet with those residents. They have a survey that's due back by March 1st, but they noticed that there's already flagging up on certain trees. So it's made them a little bit skeptical as though their concerns are not even taken into consideration at this point with the markings. I recommended that we don't jump to any conclusions, but in any event, it'd be wise to do that. And I'm just relaying the message.
Thank you. Any other ward reports? The council meeting is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the City Council on matters that are on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the City Council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor and profanity may not be used in any form. The first signatory is Mark Halls? H-O-H?
Hoss.
Hoss? Thank you. Thank you for coming forward tonight.
Hello, everybody. While I was watching the City Council meeting on TV two weeks ago, I saw the board turned down a chance to get free money for a safety program for our first responders. Although most of you said it was a great idea, you still turned it down. Why not take advantage of the head start that you had? This was about safety or doesn't it matter anymore? But then again, I also heard that the city manager went over his budget by $80,000. This more important, is this more important than the safety of our first responders who put their lives on the line every day? It's confusing to me that you would vote to spend money on our firefighters' comfort, which is an outstanding idea and I commend you all on that, by building a new firehouse but not on their safety. Did you even talk with the Rolling Meadows firefighters first? Did you ask if this was something they think as an alderman or woman would, would be voting for? Voting against the safety of our first responders is deeply disturbing and shameless. In my experience in politics, when the petty mud throwing begins, it's because someone doesn't want the attention to be put on them. On the Rolling Meadows official website, it says, "An alderman's primary responsibility is to be a representative of the people. City aldermen and women give selfishly their time and talent in effort to guide the development of the community along proper lines. Their reward is being, is knowing that they have contributed to good government." I ask all the aldermen and women to remind themselves of this definition. Lastly, there should be more town hall meetings specific to explaining all the online reports on the Transparency Portal. Rolling Meadows was awarded a Sunshine Award from 2015 for our transparency. However, if someone doesn't use a computer or doesn't have the time to review all the information on the Transparency Portal, it's useless. There should be more of an effort by aldermen and women to inform their constituents of what is going on as far as the City Council is or will be voting on. I ask you to do better, put your egos aside, and do better for the people who you are serving. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. The next signatory is Judy Haskell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Judy Haskell of 3617 Killarney Court. Upon receiving a letter from Public Works on the 16th of this month, me along with 10 other residents affected were disheartened by the news that three to six feet of all vegetation and trees would be removed along Wilkie Road based on whether or not a guardrail was to remain. This no-through, no-outlet, dead-end, local street lies along the original remains of Wilkie Road, which is our backyard, north of Cindy Court, south of Killarney Court. As some of you know, after doing some research, I created a petition. Mr. Mayor, you have the original. I submitted it along with support and signatures of my neighbors to City Hall in a copy to Public Works on Wednesday, the 20th. We request Public Works to rescind their letter and revoke the threat of any further action to needlessly cut down more than 50 trees. 50 trees along our backyard on Wilkie Road. By Thursday evening, the 21st, I received a voicemail message from you, Mr. Preina. Thank you very much, that you would possibly have a meeting with all the neighbors at City Hall to discuss this issue and possibly come up with a solution. Less than 12 hours later, we look out our windows and find these trees are tagged with pink ribbons, like it's a done deal. Now, we're not just sad or disheartened. We're angry and we're very hurt. It is our hope that our voices would be heard, that first our surveys would be received by March 1st, that they would be read. But instead, we received pink ribbons on these innocent souls. Later that afternoon in our mailboxes, we received a second letter from Public Works with inaccurate jargon, conflicting terms, and even more inaccurate data and regulations as to justify their intended actions this spring. Is this a done deal? Pink ribbons on our trees. No survey has been read or received. We have until March 1st. There's no meeting yet. The residents on Killarney Court, Mr. Mayor, would like to have a meeting, perhaps the first week of March, whatever works for all of us. Not only are there environmental issues at risk here, but there's cost-effectiveness, the aesthetics of our historic Wilkie Road, but also the tranquility, safety, privacy, and shade of our beautiful neighborhood. They're all at risk because we couldn't be heard first and discuss this in a logical, civil, and justifiable manner. We do look forward to a meeting with you, Mr. Mayor, along with our Fourth Ward Alderman and Public Works Director. I could get technical with a 2,346-page manual from IDAT, but I'll only use this in our defense if I need to. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming forward. The next signatory is Teresa Budmetz.
Mayor, City Council, and attending staff of Rolling Meadows. As I am here to speak to you, let me preface that by saying my husband had no idea or knowledge of me coming to talk to you tonight. These are my words and my thoughts. We have been residents of Rolling Meadows for 24 years. I have always been proud to be a Rolling Meadows resident until two weeks ago, watching the last City Council meeting live on closed-circuit TV. It was an embarrassing display of politics and egos. I was appalled by the behavior of the mayor, the city manager, and Alderman Gallo. I have only met Alderman Gallo once and I have no connections or favoritism for him. He did not violate any ordinances or laws by his actions, and yet the city manager and the mayor chose to make the meeting a spectacle. I especially want to address the actions and performance of the city manager. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to see the political maneuvers played by Mr. Crumstock. This was obvious by how the council voted over the past couple of months in favor of moving forward with the Wegman construction for the second fire station. I am in disbelief that this council would vote in their favor despite the blatant non-performance and completion extension requests. How can you be in approval of the incompetence of the city manager and the city attorney, failure to write a contract that doesn't have consequences for non-performance? You can't tell me that the constituents in your ward voiced to you to vote in their favor. I know we personally have had numerous messages on, from residents left on our home answering machine to the contrary. It only comes down to the city manager massaging your vote, how to vote. Quite honestly, the city manager shouldn't have to do that if he was doing excellent at his job. I ask you, why are we paying $175,000 in salary and benefits, plus five weeks of paid vacation, to someone who spends his time and energies playing political pinball instead of just doing his job? I believe Mr. Crumstock knows his job could be on the line with the upcoming election. And quite frankly, it wouldn't have to be that way if he was truly good at being a city manager and doing well for the city of Rolling Meadows. So I say shame on you to those of you on the council who participate in the political mind games instead of voting with integrity and conscience. I truly believe the current climate on the council is because Mr. Crumstock has been feeding into the dissension and not leading with the key word "leading" from a place of collaboration and trust. And shame on those of you who play along with him, especially you, Alderman Banjer, as you will not suffer any of the consequences of your votes as you move away. Or others of you who are voting for selfish, personal, political gain. And as I said before, my husband had no knowledge of me speaking to you tonight or what I would say. So please, if you have anything to say in regards to my comments tonight, please reach out to me directly and I am sure that my husband would be happy to give you my email address or my phone number. Thank you.
The next signatory is Patricia Callahan. Patricia Callahan? Are you, are you okay?
Yeah, I am. Thank you.
You were just, you were moving a little slow on the way up here. Just concerned.
It's okay. It's all right. Due to the Daily Herald's recent endorsement, I feel I must speak out. On Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at approximately 8:00 PM, whilst talking with others outside of City Hall, I want to approach Mr. John Dias as Ward 6 Alderman. A simple question, a simple question as a resident of the city. During the meeting, he had entered several failed amendments wanting to remove expenditures for the firehouse project to reduce cost. Yet, as he cast yes, as he cast yes votes, he failed to reduce, I'm sorry, yet he... Yet, as he cast yes, as he cast yes votes, he failed to reduce, I'm sorry, yet he cast a yes vote, he failed to, if he felt to reduce, if he felt the expenses were too high, he cast to no to look into cost-reduction plan. I'm so sorry, I'm very nervous. As I approached Mr. Diasus closer, he rudely held up a manila folder and said, "Don't talk to me, woman." I had two more ladies following behind me also wanting to speak with Mr. Diasus. He proceeded to ignore our present, get into his car and leaving. When us ladies walked back to the group we all had been conversing with, I tried to brush it off with humor and laugh about it. In reality, I was insulted and graded, not only as a woman, but as a resident of the city. When you are a clerk or emergency responder or a city council member, you also serve and represent the city of Rolling Meadows. You may not personally gel with someone, but it does not mean you get to be rude and disrespectful. If you do not like people contact on the side of the job, you should not be in public service. Mr. Diasus, you disrespected and humiliated me. You disrespected two additional ladies that night. I am glad to believe that this may not be the first time you have conducted yourself in this manner. You are not able to keep your personal feelings and emotions in check in the capacity of a public servant, and therefore it is my responsibility as a citizen of the city I love and to kindly ask you to remove yourself as a candidate, the mayor of this city. It is also my duty as a citizen to respectfully ask you to step down as sixth ward alderman. I keep telling my story, I will keep telling my story to newspapers and even to more news media. It is not okay to treat ladies or anyone in such indignity, as I do not feel you are fit to serve the fine people of this little town that can...
The council moves on to its first order of business. It's the consent ordinance is in for a second reading. Ordinance A, number 19-16, amend the liquor license code to reduce Class A1 to 5 and reduce Class B to 7. This is the second reading. The total number and classification of liquor licenses for the city is determined by the city council. If any license of any class is not renewed or the license is surrendered, canceled, revoked, suspended, or otherwise terminated, such licenses shall be rescinded and not be restored, and the total number of liquor licenses of that class to be issued by the city shall be reduced accordingly. Class B liquor license update. Fresca Supermarket will not be renewing their City Rolling Meadows Class B liquor license. In addition, it was recently learned that Bell's Liquor, which has held, had held a Class B liquor license from the city, had closed and therefore has relinquished their license and will no longer be operating a liquor license in the city. Class A1 liquor license update. The Holiday Inn is currently closed, and a substantial renovation and rebuilding is underway. In regards to the Class A1 liquor license that they held, the license has been relinquished due to the said redevelopment of the hotel. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Mr. Baner has made that motion, Mr. Williams has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Diasus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon? Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is approved. Ordinance B, number 19-17, is to amend 106-18A of the city code. Parking prohibited in specific places, specifically on Keystone Court. This ordinance, if adopted, would establish parking restrictions in certain locations on a public street in the city, specifically on Keystone Court. The inclusion of this street location within the city code, Traffic Section 106-18, will establish enforcement of traffic regulations and consistent posting of signs. Specifically, the location of additional parking prohibition is to be Keystone Court, west side of the street, from a point 345 feet south of the Ogunquin Road, south edge of pavement, to a point 410 feet south of Ogunquin Road, south edge of pavement. The reason for the parking prohibition recommendation is that this location had a number of neighboring businesses, patrons parking on their street. Voters' visibility is compromised in navigating the nearby street. A 90-day temporary posting of no parking signs in this location has been successful in reviving the problem with no hardships created. On-street parking has been prohibited on the east side of Keystone Court for many years. The area businesses have an onsite parking lot for patrons, employees, and operations. Is there a motion to adopt that? Mr. Baner and Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Williams?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diasus?
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is approved. This brings us to ordinance number 19-18. Amend Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations Code of Ordinances, Rental Dwelling Licensing Program. This ordinance, if adopted, would extend by one year through 12/31/2019. The Rental Dwelling License Program administered by the Community Development Division of Public Works. According to Section 18-425 of the Municipal Code, Article 11 Rental Dwellings expired on December 31, 2018, and shall become null and void unless specifically extended by action of the city council. The section of the code was included per ordinance number 13-51, approved, passed on November 12, 2013. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made that motion, Ms. Majikis has seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Budmets?
Thank you. I've been approached about this. It would be in the best interest, I believe in the best interest of the city to gather as much information as they could from people in the rental community, tenants, and others who are affected by this ordinance, to make sure that it adequately reflects the best interests of all of those people as best as possible in this remaining period, nine, 10 months that are left in the sunset period, so that we can bring forth a, either the same ordinance or something that's modified to reflect the current needs of the community in this time period. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gallo?
I too received a series of phone calls regarding this, one just as early as this afternoon, or as recent as this afternoon, and it was brought to my attention, and in the background statement, it says it operates smoothly and efficiently, and a couple of property owners mentioned to me that it does not or has not for them, and they would like to see if we put an amendment or a motion out there to have this expire as early as this June, the end of June, June 30, 2019, while in the meantime, establishing a committee with a certain number of property owners, certain number of renters, community development individual, as well as a local elected official regardless of ward. And so I'd like to make an amendment that we go ahead and push for the sunset on June 30, 2019, with having that committee in place.
Okay, so is it, Mr. Gallo, the twofold is June 30 and a citizens committee?
Correct.
There is a motion on the floor by Mr. Gallo for the June 30 sunset and a citizens committee. Do I have a second? Mr. Diasus?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
I think it may be more appropriate to divide those into two questions. First, take the question of the sunset on June 30.
Okay.
Because otherwise, you could find the two, you could be voting for the one and not the other, so...
Thank you, Mr. McCall. So we'll take the first, the first question, doing the sunset clause, if Mr. Gallo's permission.
Yeah.
We'll divide the question then, thank you. So there's amendment on this ordinance to make the sunset come up available or happen on June 30. Is there, there's a motion to amend this ordinance to have the sunset happen on June 30. Is there a second? Mr. Diasus has made that second. Is there discussion? Mr. Diasus?
Thank you. I too have been approached, and in respect to extending the sunset, if, my question is, if we extend the sunset, what happens if we, to June 30, if we extend it for, as Mr. Budmets had said, until it comes due or in a year, or if we do nothing? Can I have, can I understand what is gonna, what the implications are?
Okay, Mr. Crumstock? So we have, we have three questions on the floor, right, Mr. Diasus? Thank you.
If you don't do anything, it has expired. If you extend it to June, obviously, it's in place until, A, the next motion comes that there would be an amendment if a group is or a staff continues working to massage, and last meeting that we were here, Alderman Budmets mentioned just revisiting Airbnb and a few other items that are more modern, and making sure that a 25-plus-year-old ordinance is relooked at, and also communicating to certain residents. I know that at least one resident is here, and I know that Public Works Director Fred Vogt has asked that resident to actually put those comments down in writing, so we have that. And the other item is pretty much June 30 and that December end date, just pretty much when it would expire, or making the group or having staff work quicker on the item. So I hope that's a quick summary, but I still see Fred wants to add more.
So there's three options. There's three options, right, Mr. One moment, yes, Mr. Vogt, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Just speaking from staff, I have significant concerns trying to put a committee together if that's the will of the council, and then only having four months to gather all the information and have council make decisions on it. I would feel much more comfortable to pursue such endeavor if we proceeded to continue with the program until December 31, to give staff enough time to reach out to residents, property owners, renters, businesses, and the like. I think four months is rather tough to do.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, back to Mr. Diasus and Mr. Gallo.
Thank you. So if council does nothing and this, this ordinance expires, what does that mean?
Mr. Who?
We don't have a...
Mr. Crumstock, are you gonna answer this one?
We don't have a rental dwelling program.
Okay.
So no inspections, no, nothing happens? It all just stops?
Right, okay, so, thank you for your patience, Mr. Gallo. Yes, sir.
So if we do nothing, it'll allow essentially a third of our population to be vulnerable to not having any standards that are currently in place, but going back to the June 30, the residents whom I've spoken with are more than assured that they have the information and criteria to deliver to staff to make this have resolution by June 30. They're available.
So the question, Mr. Gallo's on the floor, and we've divided the question to amend this to June 30, and Mr. Diasus had seconded already. Is there further discussion on the amendment on the floor to sunset it on June 30? Mr. Budmets?
So if we're, if we left it at the end of the year, and we were fortunate enough to finish it by June 30, that we, the new act would take place of the old act anyway. So if it gets done that fast, that's wonderful. There's no sense of putting this under a time constraint that won't allow us to fully investigate and make sure that everybody has a chance to participate, and so I don't see any reason to change it from the end of the year. And if we get it done earlier, so much the better. And I think that, I think that the staff is aware of the importance that the council feels about this, that there's obviously people in the city who care and they want to get it done, so it may very well get done before June 30, but I don't see a reason to push that. I mean, there are other things that we've not been able to accomplish in that short of a timeframe.
Okay, there's further, any further discussion on Alderman's, Gallo's amendment to this to make it June 30? Yes, Mr. Ms. Majikis, yes?
Thank you. I would, I would agree with Alderman Budmets. I've also spoken to a resident regarding this, and she's gonna be sending me some points and opinions about things that she thinks about the program and that, and so I look forward to seeing that too, but with people's schedules, spring breaks, whatever it is, just you want to be sure that everybody can participate that wants to be participating. So I would be in more in favor with Mr. Budmets keeping it to the end of the year, but knowing that let's get this moving quicker and get these meetings set up so that everybody and every resident that wants to be part of it can be.
Thank you. Okay, will the, go through the discussion. The clerk will call the roll on Alderman Gallo's amendment to make the sunset happen on June 30.
Okay, Budmets?
No.
Majikis?
No.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
No.
Diasus?
No.
Williams?
No.
With five against and one for, that amendment fails. Is there any? Yes.
Second amendment, second committee?
Second amendment, yes, former committee, yes. Mr. Gallo, and you want a, do you have specific parameters that you would like to invoke, or?
No, I just recommend a multiple of property owners, a multiple of renters or tenants, and then at least one representative from community development, and one alderman.
Okay.
Or a woman.
Do we have a second on Mr. Diasus? Mr. Gallo's, Mr. Diasus has seconded Mr. Gallo's amendment. Do we have any discussion on it?
If I can interrupt one more time, I think we need some more parameters here. Just be an ad hoc committee that's gonna be appointed by the council, or how many people are we gonna have?
Mr. Gallo, since it's yours, would you like to embellish the parameters? Thank you.
How about we aim for five property owners, five tenants or renters, whatever you want to classify them as, one representative from community development department, staff, and one alderman.
Thank you. Does that give us enough parameters?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Mr. Crumstock?
Can I ask Alderman Gallo to add one from PD, because remember, housing enforcement does come out of PD.
Okay, and one from PD. Mr. Vogt, is there anything else that you'd like to add as we're, you know, I have Mr. Gallo's input, I just want to make from staff, is there anything else we need to add?
Not that I know of at this point. If that's a desire of council to do so, I would expect that staff would want to, in the upcoming month or months, take this to a committee of the whole and perhaps get some more clarification, but we're certainly understanding of what the potential desire is with regards to getting input, and we'll do our best.
Okay. So any further discussion? Okay, so the, the motion put forward is to have a committee, and we now have the parameters, Mr. Gallo?
Essentially, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a first? Do I have a motion to, as, I just want to make sure that we're doing housekeeping here. We've changed it a little bit, so the motion is as what has just come forward. Do I have a motion? Mr. Gallo's committee with the parameters established. Do I have a motion? Okay, sorry. You made a motion, I mean, I mean, do you have, I'm sorry, do you have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mr. Diasus. Is there further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diasus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
With six here and one absent, that does pass. Now we go forward with the ordinance as amended with the committee, ordinance number 19-18 as amended with Alderman Gallo's amendment. Is, do I have a motion? Mr. Gallo has made a motion, has seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diasus?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Budmets? That ordinance does pass.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Budmets, you have to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you voting?
If I asked, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Well, Ken's not here, screwing me up, we gotta vote.
Sorry, Mr. Budmets, I was making all these little notes here, trying to make sure I get these all right, saying, thank you. This brings us to Resolution D, number 19... This brings us to Resolution D, number 19-R-20, is to authorize the submittal of a grant application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Fund for Hicks-Euclet Bike Path Extension, tabled on 2/12/19 City Council Meeting. Staff requests postpone it until 3/12/19 City Council Meeting. At the February 12th, 2019 City Council Meeting, the items of business were postponed to a future meeting. Staff requests the opportunity, I'm sorry, the opportunity to have additional time to provide additional information on the matter, including the request made to consider splitting the proposed project to include only the Euclid Avenue Corridor and a possible grant application. This proposed resolution or amended version would appear on the March 12th, 2019 City Council Meeting for consideration. Is there a motion to postpone this resolution? Ms. Majakis has made that motion. Is there a second? Mr. Budmats has seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Budmats.
I will not be able to be at, I just learned, I will not be able to be at the meeting on March the 12th. This is in my ward and I would ask that the council allow me to be participating in this discussion. And so if we could push the date back to the 26th, that would be great. If we can't, I understand.
Mr.?
If my recollection's correct, I think we actually tabled this.
We did.
And so if we're gonna postpone it, it has to go to the next meeting. So can we, I suggest we just table it again.
Okay.
Then I'll afford you the opportunity to be here.
Okay.
No, it wouldn't then, 'cause I won't be at the next meeting.
I'm saying, we're gonna, we're gonna, it's been table already. We'll table it again. If it's postponed, it would have to come back up on the 12th.
Okay.
You can only postpone it for one meeting.
Okay.
So let's just table it again and then at the next meeting you're available.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to table. Ms. Majakis has made that, has been seconded. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo.
Yes, to table.
Baner.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Majakis.
Yes.
With six, yes and, and no nays, that moves forward. The next item on the agenda is the consent ordinance is in for risk, for first reading. It consists of three items, E, E through H. Does, I'm, as I normally would ask, the, I will pull E and I will pull F. That leaves G and H. Does any Alderman wish to pull those two? Mr. Yes.
H.
Okay, we no longer have a consent ordinance since they've been pulled, so. Ordinance E, number 1919, this is to amend the alcohol liquor code to approve a class G1 liquor license for video gaming for daisies located at 3334 Kirchhoff Road. Staff is requesting a waiver of the first reading. And the reason that I pulled this is I would like to have transparency as we go through this. So the ordinance, if adopted, would approve the fifth class G1 liquor license for video gaming in the city of Rolling Meadows. The staff's requests of a first reading and approval of the ordinance at the meeting. Tentatively, daisies is scheduled to be on the March 1st Illinois Gaming Board for approval and there is no need for the two-week delay. Is there a mo, is there, is there a Alderman willing to make the motion for waiving of the first reading of this ordinance?
So move, Mayor.
Ms. Majakis has made that.
Second.
Has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further comments, is the question is, shall the first reading of this ordinance be waived? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
Majakis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
With five approved and one opposed, it does pass. The ordinance is now back for final approval. Is there a motion to?
So move, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Majakis.
Seconded.
Yes, is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Majakis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to ordinance number 1920, amending the alcohol liquor code for the approval of a class G1 liquor license for video gaming for Isabel's Cafe, the Denati Group Restaurant Group, located at 5540 New Wilkie Road. The ordinance, if adopted, would approve the sixth class G1 liquor license for video gaming in the city of Rolling Meadows. Again, the city requests a wa, wa, waiver of the first reading and approval of the ordinance at the meeting. Tentatively, Denati Restaurants Incorporated is scheduled to be one of the March 1st Illinois Gaming Board meeting for approval and there is no need for two-week delay on this item. Is there, is there an Alderman willing to make the motion for waiving the first reading of this ordinance?
So move, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Majakis.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Williams.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
Majakis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
With five in favor and one opposed, the first reading of the ordinance is waived. This brings the ordinance is back for final approval. Is there a motion by an Alderman to approve this ordinance?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Deastis has made that, Ms. Majakis has seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
Majakis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinance is adopted. This brings us to ordinance G, is to approve the amendment to the Meyer Plan Development and for additional Tesla supercharged stations. This ordinance, if adopted, would allow an amendment to the existing Meyer Plan Development to allow additional Tesla supercharging stations in the parking lot. The petitioner is requesting an additional 10 supercharging stations at this time. With the ability to have staff administratively approve additional expansion in the future should it be requested by Tesla and Meyer, do I have a motion to move this forward? Ms. Majakis has made that and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
Majakis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, that moves forward. Ordinance number 19-00 is approve a program to charge mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency service by the Rolling Meadows Fire Department for services provided. This ordinance, if adopted, would allow the billing for specifically defined services, non-emergency and emergent incidents requiring typical and atypical services and equipment where the costs have typically been absorbed in the general operating budget of the department. Specific charges will be consistent with those published at the mitigation rate charge. Is there such a motion? Ms. Majakis has made that motion, has been seconded. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry. My apologies. You pulled it, you get first choice at it. Thank you.
My concern over this ordinance is that it does not contain any definition of what additional time is in the instruction, in the billing section of the item. Without a defined amount of time that the fire department would need to do a normal job, how are they going to bill for time beyond that? It could be wildly different or at the whim of the department and it could jeopardize the collection of any monies billed under this type of ordinance.
So, thank you. Can I, Mr. Krumbstock, I, I noticed that it's a published mitigation chart. Is that the chief? Who wants to field that for clarification?
I can handle that. So, so I did talk with Alderman before the meeting and his point is very well taken as far as what we call the additional time. And so I will go back, specific to the appendix, that's not part of the ordinance, and I'll have it for the second reading if that's, if that's amenable or you could tell me, should I change it? But I could get the usual and customary time for all the specific responses we have. If that suffices, if I, a little more history on this, we're trying to get revenue from persons on insurance, specific to their insurance costs for automobiles. Should we have a extrication on the street or whatever, a special rescue and the tool breaks or whatever, that we may be able to recover some of that cost. That normally would be the cost of normal business. And specific, we had an incident that really brought this to light when we lost 800 feet of rescue rope in a sewer, which was a sanitary sewer, it was destroyed. I went to, we went to a different municipality and tried, I tried billing them and they said unless you have an ordinance like this, we can't recover any of that unless it's a designated Mambus call-out. So that brought this to light.
So, Mr.?
Yes, one more thing, and our neighbors in Palatine Rural and Palatine have a very similar billing to this.
So, would you be amenable?
I, yes, absolutely, and we can do it on the second, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
So can I get just a clarification from Mr. McCall perhaps, and then can I just change the appendix and then the ordinance as such will be the same? Or we can talk later?
Well, I, I would put it all together as one for a second reading, that's what I would do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Majakis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With six favored and none opposed, that does pass. This brings us to new business, businesses to approve the payment of bills and warrants on the 2, of 2/26/19. Is there a motion to approve the warrants? Mr., thank you, and Mr. Baner has seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Majakis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is approved. The next item on the agenda are the consent resolutions, consists of three items, J through L. Does any Alderman wish to remove any items for the consent resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider all less, all resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Mr. Baner has made that motion and Mr. Williams has seconded. The question is, shall all resolutions be adopted? Resolution J, number 19-R-23, is to accept 2019 utility rate study. This resolution, if adopted, would accept the 2019 utility rate study as prepared by the engineering firm Baxter and Woodman. K is resolution number 19-24, is to approve, this resolution, if adopted, would approve the extra services, resolution for a period of three years with an option to renew it for two additional years. Resolution number 19-25 is to award a contract for 2019 sanitary lateral and T-lining project. This resolution, if adopted, would award Phase II construction contract for the pipe lining and T-lining of sanitary sewer laterals for residential homes within the public right-of-ways as part of the city's 2019 capital improvement program. Again, the question is, shall all three resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Majakis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, that moves forward. That brings us to other businesses and reports. I have no appointments, proclamations, the clerk has nothing. Staff reports, Mr. Krumbstock.
Obviously, I have the next two, but obviously, what we put on our board today, it's the 64th birthday for Rolling Meadows. For people, obviously, it was incorporated back in 1955. This Saturday, March 2nd, the 18th Annual Dr. Seuss Celebration will be happening at the library. There's two different readings, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Please contact the library if you would like to participate. They still are looking for readers. March 2nd is also Taste the Town, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Community Center, 3705 Pheasant Drive. Tickets cost $15 at the door. Obviously, you already saw some of the individuals who will be participating. Nothing Bunk Cake, who was here, she will be back again. We also want to mention that March 7th to 10th, the Rolling Meadows Library Spring Book Sale will be going on, so go to their website, look for the hours. Obviously, Thursday is the closed event for additional money, but Friday, Saturday, and Sunday is free to all the public. And again, contact the library at 847-259-6050 for those hours. Then coming up on Saturday, March 9th, the Rotary St. Patty's Day Dinner will be happening. This is the 19th Annual St. Patrick's Day Dinner, prepared by the Rolling Meadows Club. This will be the last one that the Rolling Meadows Rotary Club will be conducting. But we do want to mention that it will take place from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Community Center, 3705 Pheasant Drive. For more information, see the Rotaryian across the way, Public Works Director Fred Vogt, or you can also call Park District Director Amy Charlesworth at 847-818-3220, and you do need a ticket to enter. Then on Sunday, March 10th, daylight savings time begins. Remember to spring forward one hour and it is also a smart idea to change the batteries in your smoke alarm and carbon monoxide detectors. March 10th is going to be the law enforcement torch run, polar plunge for Special Olympics. That's conducted at Twin Lakes in Palatine. It starts around noon and it ends at 3:00 PM, we say, but it depends on how many people go for the plunge and they go pretty quickly. Will not be as warm as it was last year, but they will still be doing the plunge. It's a really great unite, unique opportunity to support Special Olympics. Please contact Chief Nowacki to my left if you would like to donate, if you would like to participate. And again, the reminder is that the torch run is actually done in June. And then Thursday, March 21st, at 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Rolling Meadows Library, there will be a meet and greet and seed swap for all gardeners who want to know more about community gardens here in the city of Rolling Meadows. And then have you seen the February Electronic E-News and Views, which is on our website? And again, the reminder, this is the companion to the six produced printed, and then obviously we do six electronically during the year. I do have one additional add-on, but because it's the last meeting of the month, we do want to mention our March committee meetings. So the Economic Development Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, March 5th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Hopefully, Tim and Todd Yorkman sitting from daisies will make an appearance. But tentatively, items for discussion consist of the new business feedback and contact distribution. There will be a business and community showcase discussion and we do want to remind people, April 25th at the Meridian will be our showcase this year. building incentive, and that's a real estate transfer tax incentive program that we're discussing before it comes to the city council. Chamber of Commerce update, and then items of interest. Also on that night, on Tuesday, March fifth, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting at seven P.M. here in the council chambers. Tentatively, there are five public hearings that are scheduled, a presentation, a draft comprehensive plan presented by TSCA Associates, that's the city of Rolling Meadows' petitioner. This is a continuation from the February meeting and also the workshop that was recently held in here in the council chambers. There will be an amendment to the planned development for vehicle charging stations at seventeen oh one Gulf Road. That's Continental Towers, they are in our C-two general commercial service district. It is a T-one office and institutional research district, and an M-one manufacturing district. Stephen Otis from WTA Incorporated is the petitioner for that. The final approval of a three-lot subdivision for property located at twenty-eight nineteen, twenty-nine fifteen Kirchhoff Road, that's the C-two general commercial services district, R-four intermediate district. Mark McLenn from Taylor Morrison is the petitioner for that. And obviously, that would be followed by the March Committee of the whole, also a discussion at that point in time. And then the final approval for the planned development for the property located at twenty-eight nineteen, twenty-nine fifteen Kirchhoff Road, R-four intermediate district, Mark McLenn from Taylor Morrison is again the petitioner. The fifth item is the tax amendment to the zoning code ordinance to update section one twenty-two dash twenty-seven D twelve, if you really want to look it up, for temporary seasonal outdoor seating, and that was one of the items that we had discussion at the Economic Development Committee, and now we're finishing it at the Planning and Zoning. I do want to re-mention an item, it is political season, but just for all candidates and people putting out signs, part of Rolling Meadows City Code is section one twenty-two dash twenty-two signs, it says, political campaign signs, signs or posters announcing a candidate seeking public political office and/or political issues and data pertinent thereto upon, to an area of twelve square feet. And it says, signs shall be displayed for no more than sixty days, signs shall be removed within forty-eight, forty-eight hours after an election, and political signs shall not be permitted on public property. So please be aware of that. Obviously, Public Works does pick up signs when they are on public property in the right of ways. So if you're missing a sign, you can always contact Public Works, they might have it in the back of a truck if you're looking for it, sometimes. But those are items of interest as we remind.
Ms. Sezak, Taste of the Town?
Thank you, Mayor. We hope to see you this Saturday, March second, for the Third Annual Taste the Town Event at the Community Center, from six to nine P.M. for this fun night out. This indoor Taste of Rolling Meadows will feature delicious sample portions while supplies last of the following Rolling Meadows restaurants. The Stadium Sports Club, Giant Sakura, Pita Pita, Grande Jakes, Rep's Place, Picante Mexican Bar and Grill, Bonna Beef, Fratello's, Honey Baked Ham, Jersey Mike's, Signor Tacos, Portillo's, Jimmy John's, Little Caesar's, and Dunkin' Donuts. To taste from these fine establishments, guests will be charged fifteen dollars per person to enter the event, which will also feature live music by the popular How-To-Go Dueling Pianos, and a cash bar that includes beer, wine, pop, and water. This event is hosted by the city of Rolling Meadows and the Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation. Special thanks to the Rolling Meadows Park District and Chamber of Commerce for your partnership. We hope to see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. New businesses?
Obviously, we have four that were, came into the city in January of twenty nineteen. Most notable that I would mention, obviously, we appreciate everybody in there, but is Two Stars, that's twenty-two fifty-one Plum Grove Road, it's pediatric dentistry, and I thank everybody who showed up for the ribbon, ribbon cutting recently conducted.
Traffic review, Mr. Vogt?
Thank you, Mayor. The February report from our meeting earlier this month is provided for you. Just a couple of things to highlight, the Carriage Way Drive refuse container practice in the roadway. We've had communications from the adjoining condominium complexes, and we expect to be able to come up with a solution to that this spring or summer. We will continue to work with the complexes to implement something that's safer in that area. Meadowbrook and Lowest Drive On-Street Parking, if you recall back before the first of the year, we requested and had approval of an ordinance to establish an additional parking restriction area. We've been in contact with the adjoining business and have an additional area that we are looking to consider for implementation so that on the curve, both sides of the streets can have parking prohibited, so we will be bringing an ordinance draft forward for city council consideration in, in March. Minor item, but just for your information, Gulf Road, Ring Road, traffic signal and traffic lane modifications. We had been talking on and off with the atrium business complex there to try to facilitate getting traffic out of the complex quicker, safer. Looked at traffic signal modifications, I.DOT controls that, looked at traffic lane modifications. It's quite likely that no modifications will be allowed by I.DOT, but we will, in order to better protect pedestrians there that access the bus stop on the south side of the street to put up appropriate signs similar to where we have them in other locations where we have a lot of pedestrian traffic for yielding on right turns to make that area safer. We did have a minor discussion about the November storm where we had a lot of traffic signal visibility obstructed due to the blizzard. We've learned that I.DOT is working on this issue as well, so we will defer our actions to wait and see what I.DOT develops with regards to procedures or policies and monitor that situation. Again, for your information and for public information, in March, weather permitting, our contractor, Mead Electric, will begin working on the LED lighting upgrades for the six traffic signals in the Kirchhoff Road Corridor that the city is responsible for. This, this work also includes replacing two traffic signal control cabinets, one at Kirchhoff fifty-three off-ramp, the other at Kirchhoff and Rowling Road. When that work is done, which we expect to be late March, we will have to have those signals out of service for at least an eight-hour period of time, so we will be working with the police department to direct and facilitate traffic in those areas. So we will certainly report on this as, look at our weekly reports to confirm the times, and as I say, it's weather permitting. Hopefully, this work can all be done during the month of March. Lastly, we had a brief discussion regarding support for bike path applications that was previously discussed. We're moving forward with the Quint and Hartung Road Project Grant Application for Funding, and the Hicks-Euclid will come back on March twenty-sixth, as you just took action on. So that's our meeting for February summary, and the next meeting of this committee will be Wednesday, March sixth.
Thank you. I believe you're Kirchhoff Road Bridge?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that one is also ours, just to report, some concerns were expressed, questions were asked regarding the recent report of bridge conditions, state highways in particular, Kirchhoff Road, the Route fifty-three bridges over Kirchhoff Road and those conditions. Staff, city engineer have had several discussions and correspondences with I.DOT in regards to planned inspections, work that the state is doing with regards to the whole Route fifty-three corridor, which includes roadways and bridges. We've provided that for you herein in the attached pages. We did, after this report was put out in the packet last week, last Friday, get a letter from the city engineer regarding confirmation of the work that I.DOT is planning to do, and just in summary, I'll highlight that the Kirchhoff Road resurfacing project is under contract by I.DOT. They administer that, we do the engineering for that, but we will continue to work with I.DOT and monitor not only our project, obviously, that our city engineer will be supervising, but also monitoring their efforts with regards to inspections and work as it affects the Route fifty-three bridges. So, for your information.
Thank you. Matters not on the agenda this evening, I do feel compelled, I don't normally do this, but I did have a discussion with the young lady, and I did call everyone on that petition drive, Calgari Court, and I want you to know that it has been in motion, nothing is going to happen until there's a citizens meeting, which is, we're looking at in approximately two weeks on your street, and there will be notices, so nothing will be going forward, and I have spoken to all department heads. I just received it on Thursday, I think I called you on Friday night, the process. Sorry, the communication wasn't there, but not, again, nothing's going forward until there's a citizens meeting on your street. So, thank you. Any other matters not on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Budmats?
In reference to the Kirchhoff Bridge Project, my concern is, is that, and I don't know how valid it is, so I'm just going to throw it out there, I don't doubt the integrity or the ability of our, of our staff to write us a report that says that our work that will be done on the Kirchhoff Road Project won't, won't affect the instructional integrity of the bridge, but I'd like to have our city engineer, who is covered by professional liability insurance, have a letter to that effect so that the city doesn't have, incur any liability were something to happen in the event, in the process of construction, that something were happening to that bridge, that we wouldn't be the entity liable, but they would be the entity liable for that opinion. So I, I don't know, just if that's possible to do, it's probably a five-minute deal for him to write that letter.
I agree.
If that's not objectionable.
Be a staff report this Friday?
We can certainly pursue that if that's doable this Friday or upcoming Friday.
Right, well, before.
We'll keep the council informed in this and with our Friday reports, but I would also want to check with I.DOT to see if we could get same from I.DOT. I think that might be beneficial if I'm catching what your concern is.
I just don't want to have anybody say that Rolling Meadows caused a couple hundred thousand commuters not to be able to use the bridge on the, on the, on the TV, actually.
We will, we will work with both the city engineer and I.DOT on the matter.
Thank you.
Are there other matters not on the agenda? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Baner has made that motion, Ms. Majikis has seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.